Hey, like call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, October twenty first, twenty twenty four to order, real call, please.
Here Gaffino.
Here.
Rusty Christensen.
Here.
Rusty Curtis. Rusty Gately.
Here.
Rusty Nedvedge.
Here.
Rusty Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. Audience comments, rusty comments. First item under discussion, item one, Steve.
Thank you. Item number one is regarding three oh two Mitchell Road, uh, and unit development. Uh, the board looked at the site plan a while back, and one of the concerns was regarding a fence. Uh, and some other issues regarding access to the facility. Uh, Nathan here has been working with the developer to come up with a plan. The board asked if there was any options for fencing and how much it would cost. In case the village was interested in a caution, Nathan's going to walk us through.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, so just to refresh everyone's memory, uh, this is the P U D approval for three oh two. Existing building is three hundred. Um, it went to the planning commission in February and first came to the board committee of the whole in February. At that time, there was a lot of discussion about the southern access point, um, and truck staging on the north. It came back to the committee of the whole in August. That time, the developer was able to update everyone that the new tenant for the existing building, uh, Bimbo Bakery is, uh, investing in a lot of improvements. They were able to, uh, make the southern entrance of full access. They were able to do the truck staging on the south side of the building, um, which were two big concerns. Um, the final question was about, um, fencing or screening along the northern property line. Um, at that meeting, um, developer Prologis, who is here, um, asked if the village would be willing to participate in some cost sharing to extend the fence. Um, across the existing building, given that that building wasn't up for approval, but was kind of just, obviously a part of the discussion because it's all one development, but wasn't actually being voted on. Um, so the board asked, uh, us to go back and get some pricing, what that would look like. Back tonight with that. Um, so the developer went and, uh, you know, got quotes from several different fencing companies. And this is just for the three hundred Mitchell site, um, the existing building. Um, an eight foot tall fence coming in at a hundred and forty one, a ten foot tall fence at a hundred and eighty. Um, they also, uh, got a price for adding some additional landscaping. That was one of the comments from the board. Is there a landscape option? Um, the strip along the northern edge already has landscaping, but there are some gaps. And, you know, some places where you could add more. Um, so they have a price here of thirty five thousand to add. Um, some evergreens and maples along that stretch. Um, if the board did, so tonight they're back here looking to see if the board is willing to do some cost sharing on this. Like again, this is just for the existing building, the three hundred Mitchell site. Um, staff recommends if board like to go through with that, we recommend it be in the form of a permit fee discount. Um, for the, the new building to come. Um, and that could be done as a percentage of the permit fee or a flat dollar amount, however you'd like to do that. Um, just as a reference, the, the building permit for the new building would be approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't have any exact amount that plans in, but in that range is based on square footage. So, you know, that's kind of, um, the number, you know, you're working with, um, lines up pretty well with the eight foot fence. Gave a fifty percent. Permit fee discount can be covering about half the fence, but you know, obviously that's rough math. Um, so the developer is here, Prologis, um, we're just looking for some guidance, um, you know, this, project has been taken around for a while now, and this is kind of the last outstanding thing. Um, so whichever, whichever way you all want to go with it, we want to get it buttoned up and get it verified.
Hey Nathan, I have a question. So for the proposed building, will there be a fence included in the scope of work or will there not?
Um, so, so currently they are showing a fence on the building. That is up for approval. So they are showing a fence on that. This, this additional was for to run the fence along the whole length.
And now we're going to have a new building with a fence and an old building without a fence if we decide to go that route. Potentially.
That could potentially be a.
So that puts us in an interesting position right now. Because looking at the cost estimates for these, and mind you, it's for one building. So from an aesthetic standpoint and from a uniformity standpoint, you can't have half the neighbors backing to a fence and half the neighbors not backing to a fence. So, you know, part of me is like, well, I wouldn't mind spending the thirty five thousand, let's fill it in tree line, but now that doesn't really sound like a good option. Because we're going to have half and half. So, you know, I look at this and I think, we have several communities within our, our borders that back to these type of, um, I don't want to say industrial, but commercial complexes, and we can't keep offering to do this or that or whatever it is, because at the, at the end of the day, people have to realize when you back to a vacant piece of land, you should probably check the zoning and see what's going to be built there or what's imposed uses for that. Um, because most of the time you'll find that homes that back to these type of properties are priced due to that, what they would call an adverse condition. So, I mean, if it, if there was no fence on the new building, I'd say let's just spend the money on landscaping. But now we're in a more difficult position, in my opinion.
Um, so you know, if it went to being just landscaping, um, if I revisit new buildings and say, just make that landscaping too. They did provide, and I'm sorry, I should have brought this up. They, they did show some, uh, elevation drawings, some perspective drawings from various points along, you know, showing fence, landscaping, what your line of sight would be.
Is this for the new, the, the new one or the, or the existing?
This one is the existing.
Existing, okay, thank you.
Um, I think they do have one for the new as well. Um, and that's what the fence looks like, the, the tracks fence. Um, so obviously the landscaping covers more once it's fully grown, um, but that takes a while. So once it's initially planted, the fence is going to cover more. Scaping grows up, that would be taller, um, but you have that, that time lag. Um.
What size fence is going to be in the, uh, new building? Has that been determined yet?
Um, it would be whichever one you want to go with. Eight, uh, the eight or the ten is, I, we would have it, Matt.
And then they're on, they're on board with that? Okay.
Let me ask you, the, uh, truck fence is a good fence, by the way. Nice, a solid fence. So what, truck fence is a, is a composite. It's not wood. It's, uh, lack of better terms, like a plastic, uh, composite material. And it doesn't fade. It's just a, it's really a nice fence. So, with it being, being on board when this first happened, because we follow the rules, then the code changed. That I think it, I think if we just run the fence all the way through, maybe look at the staff suggested with the permit fee deduction or, you know, break for the permit and just run the fence all the way through, use the eight foot fence and just keep it consistent. That's where I'm at. I think that's the aesthetics, the fence, the quality of the fence.
Made a good point. We've been on the board. We approved the first building. This is one of those circumstances where as a government body, why do we have to do anything? It's, it's private property. It's backing to private property. We've already approved the first building without a fence. Now we have a few complaints. Why do we feel that we need to do anything at this point?
Well, I. Just to keep it consistent is, that's why I'm thinking, just keeping it.
I think, and maybe I'm wrong, but.
That's why I think.
That's not our role as, as the village. I understand some people are mad that they have a warehouse in their backyard, but at the end of the day, it, it is what it is. It's nothing we did, or we didn't fail, or we didn't.
No, you're right.
Plan. There's nothing we didn't. I don't see why we should have to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it's, it's not really an issue that we created and it's not an issue we need to remedy.
You're right, but I felt consistently it would look better if there was a fence all the way. That's just my, that's my opinion.
See if they could take the money they were going to spend on the fence, do substantial landscaping, and then we can add some, some landscaping. And, and we can't forget also that the homeowners can also remedy this by doing their own landscaping on their end as well and kind of partner, you know, with us in this situation. I just, I just, I don't want to overstep our bounds on this because I don't feel it's a function of our, our role.
Now, again, I, unless I'm mistaken, we're only talking about the old building, the existing building and the numbers right here. So,
And it's half.
And not, not only that, the developer doesn't have to put any fence there. So we're asking them to add a fence. This has nothing to do with the new building. We're asking them to add a fence that they don't have to add to please, you know, our, our residents.
The new building is what's up for approval. You can, it's a P U D. You can put conditions in there.
Right. So we're not talking about.
It's hard to go back and require it on a building that's already approved.
Right.
Which is what we'd be asking. So the developer is asking if we'd be willing to share. It's a substantial amount of money.
Yeah, right.
So it's fair to say that if the village doesn't, you know, um, join them in some way, offset the costs some way, then that fence would not be built. Is that fair to say?
Um, I believe so.
Okay. No, I mean, I just want to make sure.
It's a lot of money.
Okay.
I think we're sitting here today because we asked them to do this out of, they don't have to do this at all and still build that new building. So we're here today because we asked them to consider doing it, and they're asking us, fine, we're willing to do it. But we'd like some help with that. So, um, have, have the developer, have you guys proposed a type of share, percentage of share or?
Just out of the gate, we've been talking about fifty fifty. Um, obviously these are our estimates, the building permit fee and such. So I haven't, we haven't gotten down to, fence level, but, uh, about a fifty fifty split. So, you know, half of the, the building permit fee is approximately seventy five. About half of the eight foot fence. So it seemed to line up pretty well.
Yeah, personally, I like to see this at ten foot fence. If this is going to happen, I think, we're putting a, if they're going to put a fence up.
Gaudy. I think ten foot, a ten foot fence is not going to enhance. If they're worried about property value enhancement, I think that's going to detract from it because you're now going to have like the Berlin wall in the backyard. I've seen these houses that back to the expressway.
Those ones on an expressway are twelve or fifteen or eighteen feet.
But I'm seeing others that have like big fences back of them. I'd, I'd much rather see us do, do something.
Eight foot works. This is probably what fifty feet from their property line? If not more, isn't that that Nikor right away or?
Yeah. So you have the.
Well, I mean, it won't be like a big Berlin wall right behind their house.
The Nikor right away. Um, and then there is existing landscaping along there with the fence on the, on the drive aisle.
Is there a berm there on which the fence would sit? Is it on a, is it on an elevated?
There is a slight berm where the existing landscaping is, but only a couple of feet. It's not, you know, super tall.
Sure.
Um, but we would want to put the fence.
Where it's supposed to be. Is that the setback from the houses to the building? How far is that? Is that, is that within our ordinance? Is that?
Um, so, so the, this, the strip of land between the drive aisle and the property line is approximately twenty five feet wide all the way down.
Five, what did you say?
Twenty five.
One, the, the strip of land between the property line of the gas line, right there. And then that first drive aisle, there's a twenty five foot strip of landscaping. Fence would go in that area. On to the building, then you have to get, you know, it's a couple hundred.
So we followed all of our setback and building setbacks and things like that. So again, this isn't something that we, need to be spending money on. It's nothing we did wrong, and it's nothing I feel that we need to remedy. I'm fine spending some money on some landscaping. Um, and if they want to do a fence on the new building, that's fine. That's great. But I, I just can't see using a hundred and forty or especially a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of our taxpayers' money.
It's only half.
Not in behalf of that.
It's not our taxpayers' money. It's, it's also, it's also the Band-Aid fix because we did mess up the first time.
Correct, but that's not our taxpayers' money. It's different.
This is just an expensive learning lesson because it should have been thought of the first time.
We have setback laws, rules and ordinances.
And much like we're requiring to put the fence on this new building, it also could have been asked on the first one.
Development, residential, then it should have been made a longer distance. But since it wasn't and since it's uniform throughout the village, we can't sit and say, well, we've got a couple angry residents. We need to do something.
No, but guess what? In the future, when this happens, we're going to be asking for fences. So at the end of the day, it should be a ten foot fence. And call it a day.
How do seconds go over for development when they can go down to Aurora and not have to spend two or four hundred thousand dollars?
Have fun down there in Aurora.
Saying we need to think this through and we need to understand. We didn't cause the problem and we don't have to remedy it. Oh, we didn't. We didn't cause the problem.
Actually, we did follow the rules, but it.
Well, it was.
Then it was.
It could have asked.
You define the problem for me. What's the problem?
Would you like to live behind this building with the trucks?
No, but I also know when I'm going to move into a blank field behind me, maybe I should check the zoning. And when you look at it from a real estate standpoint, those homes do tend, tend to sell for, for less, knowing that it backs to an industrial or commercially zoned property. No, I wouldn't like to live behind it, but people do live behind it. And that's why we have these ordinances and we have these setback rules.
And you also never know how long it's going to take for something like that to be developed. So you'd like to think that you would be able to trust your elected officials to make the choices that they should be making.
Long before the trouble goes then.
I don't know.
Well, it's a fact.
I'm for offensive, okay, whoever. Todd?
I'm for a fence. I'm for a ten foot fence, and I'd be willing to spend half of it, fifty percent of it. Same, that's my opinion.
Same.
I'm just pulling everybody to see.
Yeah. So I, I guess I'll just say this. I, I really see both sides of this and I really kind of, um, uh, agree with Jason. It's a, it's a learned, it's a learned lesson. And right, I li, I used to live in Aurora next to Golden Oaks where they're now building homes after twenty five or thirty years, and I was constantly worried. But I knew it was commercial and there was an eight foot fence behind me. So like you knew that was always a possibility. Um, I think if what you're proposing is the, uh, what you write estimated fee of a hundred and fifty thousand dollar permit fee for the new building, and if you're suggesting half of that being seventy five thousand toward either eight foot fence with landscaping or the ten foot fence. So, um, I would vote for that. I see both sides of it. I think that board did nothing wrong when they first approved it. I think going forward, right, we do things differently, even if, you know, there isn't, there's a possibility that it could be residential adjacent to, um, the industrial property. So, uh, I do see both sides of it, but as Todd pointed out, developers were nice enough to come back. They didn't have to. We asked them to. Good faith, be a good neighbor. They came back and they offered this. So that's where I am in the end. I would say yes to that. Long-winded answer, but that's my answer.
So, um, ten foot. Okay.
Okay. Well, that, that's the direction. I'll, I'll write it up and it'll be, um, you know, like a, a section in the P U D ordinance. I'm going to be, uh, calling the attorney to get the right language.
All right. Thank you.
Item two under discussion, uh, Steve, uh, twenty twenty four tax levy estimate.
Thank you. Here tonight is our, uh, opening discussion on our preliminary tax levy. And Jason's going to walk through our tax levy estimates for the upcoming year. And, uh, this is, uh, as a reminder, this is just the opening conversation. What happens between now and typically the first meeting in December is when we finalize the tax levy. So there's things in here, for instance, of the SSAs where there are numbers that are put in right now, but they could be refined by the time we get to December. Jason?
All right. So just a quick overview of the, the tax levy calendar. Tonight, we're going to go through the preliminary estimates. At the next meeting, we're going to bring back those estimates. Um, get the board to approve those estimates for the purpose of issuing the notice for the newspaper and holding our public hearings. Then we'll come back on December second and actually approve, um, the levies to then send to, uh, the county for final approval. Just a quick overview of the property tax. Um, property taxes make up about sixteen point seven percent of our general fund budgeted revenues. That's the third largest revenue behind sales tax and income tax. Um, the twenty twenty three property tax levy brought in two million, eight hundred, one thousand, two hundred and six dollars to the general fund. Um, you can see that's breaking up by, in that graph I have, there are many different lines. We can see sixty five percent of that or one point eight million dollars of it goes towards our police pension funding. Um, and then the levy we're going to discuss tonight is going to be funding our next budget year, so our twenty five, twenty six budget that we'll be, uh, doing later this winter. Just a quick overview of the property tax law statute. Uh, the village is subject to the property tax extension limitation law, or P T L, which means that we can only increase our levy by whatever C P I has been determined or five percent, whichever is lower. Um, but taxing discurs can also, uh, receive an additional allowance for new property to add to the levy. So it's basically the, the C P I or the five percent plus new property. Um, then with P T L, you can't catch up. So if whatever the C P I is, whatever we decide to increase by C P I, it's kind of use it or lose it. We can't come back and say, oh, well, it was, you know, five percent this year. We took one percent. Maybe we'll take that rest of that four percent. It's goes year to year. Just a quick overview of C P I. Over the past ten years, C P I has averaged two point eight percent. And really a lot of that two point eight percent came in those years, twenty two and twenty three, where we saw it was seven and six and a half percent, back to back years. If you took those two years out of it, looked at the other eight years, we're at about one point eight percent. Um, on this graph here, I have this dotted line, which shows basically what the village has taken in those years. You can see we didn't take a C P I increase in twenty eighteen and for the twenty two levy. Plus in last year's levy, we had the option to go with, with C P I being six and a half percent, we have the option to go up to five percent. We like to do a two point five percent. There were, there were two years we took nothing over the last ten years and one year where we took half of the allowance. Um, the current C P I for this levy we're talking about tonight is three point four percent. Um, so the numbers we kind of put together in this presentation are using the three point four percent, but obviously the village has any option from zero up to three point four percent to use for the levy. Um, big part of the levy is our E A V. The total E A V is projected at eight hundred and eleven million dollars. Um, these are the Kane County's preliminary estimates. These numbers will probably come down a little bit as we're going through the, the appeal process over the next few months. So probably next spring, we will get the final E A V numbers. Um, but E A V is led by our residential at six hundred and sixteen million. Um, the estimated new construction as part of this levy is thirteen point two million dollars, um, eight point nine from the residential. A lot of this is made up of the season's, uh, apartments are now, uh, coming online for us. Plus a lot of the Lincoln Valley is really coming onto the taxes now from that, those last phases of that. Um, as you see, the, uh, the new construction is projected to add about forty seven thousand dollars, uh, in new revenue to the tax levy this year, assuming that three point four percent. Um, the village has historically increased its levy for the new construction. As I mentioned, for C P I, there were years where we didn't take anything. Um, but each year, even when we didn't take any C P I increases, we've always added that new, evaluated new construction onto the levy. So the main part of the levy, as I mentioned, the, the police pension, uh, valuation. What the number we're using is based on our most recent valuation, which is as of June first, twenty twenty four. Our policy is to fund our pensions at one hundred percent by twenty forty. So that's the state laws actually have your pensions ninety percent funded by twenty forty, but we target one hundred percent. The fully funding recommended is one point nine million dollars, one million, nine hundred and five, um, which is actually up from last year's one million, eight twenty five. Um, some of the reasons that went up is the investment return came a little under our assumed. We assume six and a half percent our investments are going to get, but the actuarial value is at five point nine seven percent. Um, and a lot of that has to do with the way the investments are, are done, how we smoothed it over a five year period. Initially, it had a really good year, uh, last year, but we had a couple of years previously that were losses. So that kind of gets rolled into, um, what the number they use for that. And then plus we had more retirements than, uh, expected in the valuation. You know, the valuation every year looks at who's in our pension plan, what their ages are. They make assumptions of when, how long people are going to work, when they're going to retire. Um, so we had more retirements than they were expecting. Um, our pension is funded at sixty, sixty one point nine percent, which is up from the fifty eight point two percent last year. Uh, and we had calculated seventeen point five million dollar net pension liability, um, as of our last fiscal year, actually to decrease one hundred and thirty two thousand. So as far as the, the estimated tax levy we're looking at, using that three point four, uh, percent C P I. Um, you see the, the top line at last year, two million, eight oh one was our last year, how much money we got last year. Um, adding that three point four percent adds ninety five thousand, two hundred and thirty four to the levy. And then the new construction on top of that, I mentioned the forty seven, nine eighty one is a two million, nine hundred and forty four thousand dollar levy. Um, basically because our E A V down below, you can see our E A V went, uh, significantly increased this year. Even though we're increasing our tax levy five point one percent, our tax rate is actually decreasing nine percent. So basically, when you look at somebody's tax bill, um, if the value of your property went up ten percent, say, you would see an increase on your tax bill because you're, the value of your property went up higher than, than what the tower tax rate went down. But if your tax, if your air bash, cash, cash value that the county assess your property at, say, went up seven percent from last year to this year, along with our net, our decrease in tax rate, you'd probably see a decrease in how much you're paying towards the village or your, for the property tax.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
So you had just said a few slides ago that the, uh, increase was going to be fourteen percent in E A V.
Yeah.
But yet you're saying we may show a nine percent decrease in the tax bill as a whole?
This is our tax rate.
Tax rate.
Because it's a rate that gets applied to each individual property, like the value of each individual property.
My concern is that the E A V's are going to come in higher because Fox Valley area has seen an increase of sixteen to twenty percent year over year since twenty twenty. So when I hear it's only going to be a fourteen percent increase, I, I'm still a little worried just knowing what's been happening in the real estate market.
You think it'll be higher than? Yeah. I mean, right now, all we have is the preliminary from, from, uh, the county. Usually, I mean, the last few years, whenever they've kind of give those preliminary numbers in September each year. I feel like the E A V's historically has gone down a little just when some of the appeals and some of the values get reduced. Um, the fourteen percent is actually higher than it's been any of the E A V over the last few years. So it could change. I'm not really sure, but.
You know, a fourteen percent increase in E A V, even after taking the full P T L of at five point one?
The E A V, it doesn't affect, uh, the C P I at all.
Still see a decrease because it took the full levy?
Uh, yes, because the E A V went up fourteen percent. So our tax rate is basically that our levy request at two million, nine forty four, five hundred divided by what the total E A V is. So since the top number only went up five point one percent, the bottom number increased fourteen percent, it, our rate's going to go lower.
A half percent in twenty twenty two, we didn't take it at all. Twenty eighteen, we didn't take it at all. Did we have any detrimental effect to the budget, to any of our funding because of it?
Not those years. Um, but we have seen, you know, especially on the police pension side, I think the last four years, we've seen it increase about five hundred thousand dollars. So that number, as we keep approaching twenty forty, that number is going to keep going up higher. Um, and we also did have some unprecedented sales tax numbers. Um, this past year, we did see kind of the only year that sales tax didn't go up. I mean, it went down a little bit, but didn't significantly drop, but that almost seems like it started to tail off a little bit. Some of those five, six, seven percent increases year over year we were seeing. So those years, no, we didn't see any detrimental changes.
Work, building, and results of that, um, growth in our retail segment, you know, the, the auto mall, things like that, the cannabis store. Um, if we took less than the five percent, would that, would that have any detrimental effects on us?
So, and one thing we were going to talk about, uh, coming up was like the grocery tax, how the state grocery tax, the one percent that we receive are misscheduled to go be reduced or eliminated on January first, twenty six. So that's about seven hundred thousand dollars. Um, on an annual basis to our general fund, that revenue that could just go away, um, come January first, twenty six. So until then, you know, not taking a ninety five thousand dollar, we probably won't see as significant, but it's one of those things that in the future with possibly a significant revenue source going away, our pension obligations and just normal increases and, you know, salary increases that could, we could see. Uh, moving on to the SSAs, as Steve mentioned, a lot of these are, we're kind of just, uh, trying to finalize the numbers. Um, we're seeing increases in a lot of the SSAs and, and I'll talk about the Waterford Oaks, the Timber Oaks, Pine Creek and Will Lakes. Um, increases there are really just looking at the contracts. We have a lot of mowing contracts or landscaping contracts there. A lot of the levy requests that we have been carrying over for those really hadn't changed in many years. And we're kind of sitting down and looking at how much we're actually spending on those landscape contracts versus what we're levying. Some increases there need to be made just to kind of catch up to, you know, where, how inflation's been over these past few years. Oak Hill, uh, levy, Steve and I were talking about that earlier today. We had it at forty six thousand, four twenty, which basically makes up of ten thousand dollars of landscaping. Um, fifteen thousand of pond or creek maintenance. And then we talked about a couple, um, uh, committee of the whole meetings, uh, that the pond restoration of the, I think it was three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. But we were deciding to, we would kind of take that back over twenty years. The village would all kind of front the money, pay for the project, and we get, we'd take it back over twenty years and have the residents pay it back through their tax levy. Um, that's added to there. Um, that's kind of a guess right now because the R F P or how much that project is actually going to cost, uh, comes is due Friday. So I'm guessing at the next meeting, we're going to have an updated, uh, amount of what we're, we think the levy should be for there. Um, and then also just talking that fifteen thousand dollars to the pond creek maintenance, we can probably bring that down to five thousand dollars just based on, on what really is needed, uh, there. Plus we have some reserve balance, uh, still in that fund that we can kind of, uh, use over these next few years. They got to keep that number lower.
And just a reminder to the board, with the Oak Hill S S A, our plan was once the R F P comes back, we want to bring it back to the board, show you the options that came back, how much it's going to cost them. We only had an estimate before. And then once that's done, we're trying to set up a meeting. We. We anticipate it being in the second or third week of November with the Oak Hill residents of the actual neighborhood. We're going to try to put it out there and see if they want to come in, ask us questions about the project, about their tax levy for the SSA and how it works. And then, the idea would be to bring that back after that meeting to December with the regular levy.
All right, so just a quick wrap-up. As I mentioned, past practice has been to take the CPI new construction with the exceptions of the 2018, 2022, and then the 23 levy, where we took half of the allowable amount. Just some future considerations, a lot of these I've mentioned already, but the police pension contribution has been going up significantly over each years. This past year went up 130,000 or 7.1%. As I mentioned, over the past four years, we've gone up over $500,000 there. Normal salary and benefit increases of a lot of our union contracts have annual salary increases, if they were from 3% to 4%. So, those are going to continue to rise each year. Goodness Services going up. Then, I mentioned the grocery tax elimination on January 1st, '26 could be upwards of $700,000 to our general fund of revenue going away. We do have the option to pass a local ordinance that we can probably get into during the budget for the next couple of months of, we could pass something to put that on a local level. But if we didn't do that, that money would go away January 1st. So, our recommendation currently is the 3.4 CPI plus new construction, which will lead to a levy amount of the $2,944,500. Obviously, like I said, we would bring back that amount at our next board meeting. That would be the amount or approval that would go to the newspapers and we'd notice for the public hearings to have. But the final approval wouldn't come until December of, that's what we file with the county.
I have a quick question. Where does the increase in sales tax fit in with all of this?
So, that goes straight to our capital projects fund. So, any of that money, I think we're projecting like $1.4 million of new money a year. That money would basically go to fund the debt payments on our capital projects or on our new public works facility. That's about 1.25 million. So, nearly all that new money, maybe just a little bit left over. That leftover would stay in our capital projects fund to help fund our roads and things like that.
To the whole point about the 2.5 we took last year, if you've said that, we haven't seen any negative effects from taking either no levy or partial levy?
I think we're, as I mentioned earlier, we're looking like down the road here of future items of...
Figureway change between now and then. I want to make sure that we're looking at it year by year and doing this right because we're still dealing with high inflation and high grocery prices. I cannot in good conscience say we're going to take more than we need to be taking right now.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to be getting into the budget process here shortly. So, as we're looking at next year, this is our next year budget. We can bring back some different amounts at the next meeting, but yeah, I don't see any negative effects right now. It's just, as I mentioned, we're looking at the future here, not passing by the money. Anybody else?
Good.
Do you have an estimate of what you think this would cost per resident?
I don't have that here, but again, it's going to vary by property by property. They mentioned since the tax rate is projected to go down so significantly, there might be some people that would see a decrease on their village tax paid, but there might be some that see, so it all really just depends on where you live.
Yeah, my opinion this year is the same as it has been my first three years, and that is, I would, I'd like to see the minimum increase that we possibly can get by with and then add the new construction in as well. So, ideal zero, but I understand that's probably not going to be the overall sentiment up here. But as minimal as possible is always my opinion.
Well, for me, I think that given what Jason has said, that's a little bit short-sighted given that we know that that grocery tax is going to go away. And then, we don't take the CPI that we can, then we have to just look at grocery tax that is municipality-wide, and then we're adding on another tax. So, I definitely in favor of taking some of it. I would probably even go as far as saying 3.4%, but we need to take something, I think.
You else?
I agree. We've got 15 years to get the police pension fully funded. So, we have to start somewhere. We can't get by by just putting in like an extra $130,000 every year. That's not going to cut it.
Is that one of your concerns, Jason? Was that, I remember you mentioned that earlier.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, that's a concern, you know, when it, that's just, you know, an expenditure of our general fund. So, when that's going up, I mean, this year was 130,000. There's been, I think the past two years, we're talking 200,000, it's gone up. So, it definitely makes it difficult when that money, that keeps going higher and higher, and it's going to keep doing that as we get closer.
I mean, no one here, the staff's not trying to propose that we want to tax anybody. We don't want to tax anybody, but we come here with the expenses that we have to put out there. The police pension alone, it goes up about 130 grand again this year. The full CPI request at the 5.1, which captures new construction, gets us about $142,000. So, it's just enough to even cover the police pension obligation. So, every year you take a zero, you're taking 130 grand out of the general fund and putting it towards police pension, but no revenue guaranteed to offset that. You keep doing that, and then you lose the $700,000 in the grocery tax, our general fund's going to take a huge hit. So, at some point, you either have to decide whether or not we want to extend the grocery tax. If we keep taking zeros, then we're going to have to talk about the grocery tax being expanded.
Right.
Next item, item three, Steve?
Mayor, on item two, I don't know if the staff got a percentage of what the board wants to do.
Well, I think they want a variety. I don't know, I just kind of heard.
I'm okay with the...
You like it at 3.4?
I'm okay with the proposed 3.4. That's where I'm at.
Same.
Same.
That's three, Ted?
I'm in favor of the 3.4 with the construction taken as well.
Mine's going to be zero, but that's not going to fly here. So, my opinion is as low as possible, plus new construction. So, I don't have a number, zero. My number's zero.
Yeah, as much as for myself, I'd like to have it at zero, but you do need to cover those expenses, so I guess...
Sounds like we're going to have a little bit of extra money in our sales tax potentially, the new sales tax based on what the debt payment's going to be. That's a couple hundred thousand there, but you know.
Can't count on anything. Everybody on the board that our tax bill is made up of 16, 17, 18 different taxing bodies. And I know you're like, well, how much is it going to add? But $20 here, $80 there, $40 there, it adds up to hundreds of dollars a year for people's tax bills. And if there's anything we can do to be good stewards and to make sure that we're managing every nickel that we get, we shouldn't just be like, well, let's throw a number against the wall and see what sticks.
I don't think that's what we're doing here.
We need to do a better job and hold the school district.
I don't think that just throwing, we were just throwing something up against the wall to make it sticks. It was explained to us where our financial situation is with police pension and losing some tax revenue. I have the floor now. I have the floor. Let me finish, and then you can respond. That's how we treat each other. So, I don't think it's fair to say that we just threw stuff up against the wall and staff, you know, is trying to make us vote for something that maybe we don't need. I think it was, you read it, it makes sense for what they're trying to tell us is that eventually, we have to, you know, increase revenue to pay for services. And if you do a gradual increase, it's better than all of a sudden at once. We got to hook into some type of grocery fee tax. So, everyone has their own opinion. If your opinion is 000, that's fine. Others have other opinions on how we have to generate tax revenue for services rendered. It's not, and it isn't just throwing things against the wall.
Previously, if we take less than the 3.4 or if we took, take what we took last year, or if we took zero, would it have an adverse effect on our position? The answer I was given was no, it would not. The argument I'm making is, I understand we have services. That's our job to make sure that the roads are plowed and paved and everything else. But again, I want to make sure that we are being fair and we are only taking what we need because it's not our money at the end of the day, and people are struggling right now. And if there's some way we can, okay, maybe not 3.4, but 2.5, 2 or 1.5, and not cut any essential services, that's what we should be looking at. And that's what I'd like to step back at. You know, what do we need to not, you know, have to panic or not worry or not provide a service, but just to make sure that we're in a comfortable, good position, but not taking more than we need?
Isn't that the number you gave us, 3.4?
That's what makes it difficult.
No, but I think that's the number you gave us, right? That's the number you feel comfortable with, that's...
I honestly think when we come up with the CPI and we come back to the board, the last two years, because of sales tax being so high and CPI being so high and we knowing that other taxing districts were probably going to take 5%, the board took the zero and the 2.5 instead. So, when we put this together, historically, we've always brought the CPI increase to the board as the starting talking, which is why the 3.4% is in the model because that's the CPI. So, that's the talking at the start. The board can always reduce the number, as you've been discussing. The concern that we have is just, it is really about, a lot of it is with the police pension because every single year, the police pension obligation is almost, it keeps matching up closely to what the CPI increase would be. So, the only concern that I was raising about the grocery tax is, if the board elects not to continue that grocery tax, January 1st of 2026, you're taking $700,000 out, plus you're talking about the CPI increase. If you take zeros at that point, we're reducing our general fund dramatically and not being able to offset the police pension contributions every year. It's going to be difficult at that point. So, I'm just giving you a heads up that that's what happens if you go down that road every year. So, this year, what we could do is, still haven't, the board has not talked about the grocery tax yet. Jason and I were planning to do that as part of the budget discussion in, you know, February and March of next year because we do have a little more than a year to make that decision. In the meantime, we don't have to pass the final levy until December. If you want to do what we did last year, I'd be more than happy to bring back just a couple percentages and show you the breakdown of what the effect would be on the average homeowner. The one thing we are proud of is our portion of the tax bill. The village's portion, in most cases, is below 5% of the entire tax bill now because we have been taking less and less. So, I think the average is around 40% to 50% of the tax bill. So, with that in mind, we can come back and we can do it in late November before we get ready to approve it in December.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Right, item three.
Thank you, Mayor. My computer's making noises. All right, item number three tonight is regarding our Veterans Memorial. So, we, as you know, we have the Veterans Memorial that, here, let me put the presentation up. So, Veterans Memorial started, we're going back historically with the staff here. We think sometime between 2005 and 2009 was when donations were starting to be taken to build a Veterans Memorial. And our beautification committee today, one of the members mentioned that they think the actual memorial itself was built somewhere in the early 2010s, so maybe 2011, maybe 2012. When we have in the strategic plan right now is two things. So, there's a couple items relative to the Veterans Memorial. The first one was to review enhancing the memorial. And the second one that we're addressing in this discussion tonight is bringing people's awareness to the memorial. You know, so one of the concerns that was brought up is, we've had a Veterans Memorial. We do an annual Veterans Day ceremony there on actual Veterans Day. And it's a wonderful ceremony. It's only 20 to 30 minutes long, but it's very nicely done. And that's usually the only time we get people to congregate down there. So, one of the thoughts we have is, since we've been adding special events and doing things like that internally, you know, we can enhance the Veterans Memorial. And in addition to that, bring more awareness to it by simply having more events and actually looking to partner with people like the library. We'll be reaching out to them and asking if they would like to do, you know, some educational programs and whatnot. So, this whole process started with having a group of people to just drive the conversation. So, as in the past with the village, we hired Pesca Associates. They've worked with us for years as planning consultants. Jody Mariano, who's here tonight, is a landscape architect, and she has done designs such as Riverfront Park and the Silo Park designs that we've looked at in the past for our future as well. And the mayor said, you know, I want to get some people on this internal group. I want them to be veterans. I want to hear their voice. So, aside from myself, Brian Richter, Nathan, who from the staff sat in on the committee, we had two residents from the community that, one being a resident, one was a resident as a veteran. And then, we had two staff members that are actual veterans. So, Terry Poulsen, who is, works in Public Works, is an Army veteran. And our deputy chief, Mike Quinn, who was in the Navy, they also sat in and gave a perspective of the Veterans Memorial from actually being veterans. So, when we met with Jody the first time, the goal was, as I said earlier, is, we've been trying for years to get a piece of equipment to display there. You know, put something out there, maybe a tank or a piece of artillery. The Lions Club has offered to help fund some of that even to do that. So, we started looking about expanding the existing memorial. But when the group actually went to look at the memorial together, they decided that instead of expanding the memorial, they thought it might make sense to enhance the existing memorial that is there. So, the existing memorial, a lot of it was done by fundraiser. People paid for bricks. The bricks have inscriptions in them. Like Mayor Gaffino has one for his father, and you know, it'll say his name, the Army, the year he served, and the bricks are on the ground there. Those bricks are already becoming kind of worn. So, some of those bricks are already kind of fading out. People are walking on the weather and whatnot. So, we started looking at the wall, and the wall that's there has, you know, plaques that were just strewn on a brick wall that has actually made out of cement but cut to make it look like brick. And so, we started looking at, and the group said, you know what? I think we need to actually redo the existing memorial before we ever dream about actually building onto it. So, with that, Jody went back and changed her concept from a perspective of growing it to, let's make the first phase focus on the actual memorial that's already there and then talk about expanding from there. So, with that, what we're going to do is, I can talk more about, you know, the costs and everything later, but I'm going to have Jody walk you through what the actual committee came up with.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just as Steve mentioned, I'm Jody Mariano, landscape architect with Pesca Associates. And I'm going to take you through the memorial plaza and expansion project. Just as Steve mentioned, staff, shout out to us to assist with long-range planning for the Vets Memorial area. So, the purpose of this effort is to define a high-level concept for the area. We will go through some high-level budget costs just to kind of, you know, do the budget analysis to explain what this all would entail. That said, it does not, we're not asking the board to vote on a dollar amount at this time. It's really just, here is the outcome of the work that we did with the steering committee. And then, next phase would be to further define what the actual plan and the project would be. Next one? Great. Thank you. So, yes, thank you to Mayor Gaffino and Steve and Nathan and Brian for participating in our committee. Just as Steve mentioned, we had these fine folks join us. We met three times. One of those times, we went out to the site to kind of, you know, get puts on the ground and take a close look at it. Three of the folks that sat in our committee were actual veterans, and they brought great perspective as to what they'd like to see happen in the memorial space. Next one? So, our study area is here. We're generally looking at the area along Willow Way. The Vets Memorial itself is Willow Way and Farview. But this is a really interesting area. There is a sidewalk today that connects John Street to Oak Street, but this could serve, as Steve mentioned, kind of greater connectivity to other destinations and the neighborhood at large. We've got the library nearby. We've got church nearby. We've got Route 31 with all of the businesses. We've got the riverfront parks nearby. So, this could be sort of another stop along somebody's route in walking and a way to engage them and make the Veterans Memorial and interpretation kind of more obvious in the neighborhood. Next one? So, zooming in, the areas that we really focused in on here are the areas along Willow Way, the Vets Memorial at Farview Drive. Um, the Vets Memorial at Farview Drive, um, is highlighted in blue. Uh, the committee all, um, agreed that this really was the priority project. Um, just as you heard, the village does have a request out to the government to get a piece of artillery. Um, we had to plan for the worst case scenario, which would, what would be the biggest piece of artillery that we could get, and if it were a tank. Which I think there's some interest in having a tank.
Is that the worst case or is that the best case scenario?
Well, best case, I mean, worst case from a spatial standpoint. But from a spatial standpoint, we have to be able to plan for the biggest piece of equipment. And we just know that the size of tank, if we were lucky enough to get one, um, would really, um, hurt the scale of the existing memorial plaza. So. Uh, we turned to the other open space on State Street, which connects to Erickson Park and the community over at Robert Street to the north. That's what we call the artillery plaza, that in the future could comfortably. Fit a tank if we were to get a tank or cannons or whatever it might be. But we want to really, um, focus in on how to enhance the memorial plaza. Um, to make it really comfortable for people to, to visit day to day, but also during events and, um, and kind of balance that. Um, uh, comfort with, uh, being a respectful place for veterans. And then in addition to that, also just enhancing the sidewalk areas would be sort of a longer term. There was a lot of discussion that the committee had about, okay, if you get into the vets plaza. That can have memorial and interpretive features, what about also including, um, additional features along the length of the path? Places that it might have additional signage or landscaping or benches to kind of, you know, stretch your experience. Um, in interpreting those types of things. So just some photographs, um, if anyone hasn't been out there recently, this is, here are some pics of the Vets Memorial, uh, area today. Um, there are some really high quality features, we've got a, a wall of really tall, great quality spruce trees. Uh, we've got, uh, five military service seals that are mounted on those piers. I would say that the piers are not. Something that we feel we want to hang on to, but the military service seals, the five circular bronze plaques definitely want to be reused. Um, the plaque at the top right, um, is very high quality bronze plaque, something that we'd want to reuse. Um, contrary to that, the image on the bottom right, which memorializes seven individuals who are honored. In the plaza, we think that we can do better in the way that we memorialize those folks. Um, so, and you can see also at the image on the bottom left, we have the wall. But the way that the plaques are positioned on the wall could be done a little bit more respectfully, a little bit more artfully. Um, so, uh, some of the other things that we heard when we, uh, met out there, uh, the, the fountain feature is not in great condition. Um, the pedestal really should be replaced. Uh, the space was noted as being too tight. The piers in the middle of, the, the five piers in the middle of that plaza tend to get in the way. The paving is starting to shift and, um, when we have a lot of elderly folks out there, there are concerns about safety and using the space. And I mentioned the fountain, the flagpoles are also in great condition, and so those things we want to hang on to. Uh, the other areas that we looked at as far as expansion goes. Um, on the bottom left shows, uh, just an image of the sidewalk, so the sidewalk is up against the curb. We do have some interesting topography and drainage that happens in the landscape around here that we want to protect. This was a former railroad embankment, so there's a berm, um, up at the east side, and so that, you know. Certainly stay intact, there's some swales that we'll need to continue to provide drainage for. And then the other images at the top, um, show that, uh, little. Paved space that connects along, uh, State Street to Erickson Park. So there's a memorial boulder. There's a segmental retaining wall, drinking fountain, bike racks, RPZ. So things like the drinking fountain and the RPZ, we would certainly want to hang on to, it's just more cost effective to not mess with. Infrastructure if we don't have to. Um, but if this area did become the place where we might have a tank in the future, um, it would need to expand out. So we'll show you some imagery as to what that could. Okay, so back to the Vets Memorial. So this is a, it's a plan that shows the existing conditions. Um, again, the issues that we heard from the group, space feels too tight, the pavers are uneven, the fountain is not so nice looking. Um, space is really dark at night. So the opportunities that we talked about was how to, you know, how can we make the space more welcoming to be used day to day? Um, and also during special events, really promote that awareness and, and, um. Uh, education about, uh, military service. Uh, and then accommodate more interpretive memorial features, incorporate things like seating, landscaping and lighting. So the, the proposed plan is on the next slide. And so we generally maintain the same circular shape in the center, but we add additional pavement, um. Mayor used the term wings, so, uh. Wider landscape areas that kind of branch out from each side of the memorial. So this gives. More opportunity for people to come in, more opportunity for places to sit. Um, we've got additional, um, opportunities for walls and, um, planters on top of walls. We've really kind of pushed all of the goodies out to the perimeters, we've got more space for people to fit in the middle. Uh, the fountain would be replaced with another fountain feature, but still using the same mechanical system. The, um. The flagpoles would stay as they are, but the uplights would be replaced with, uh, better uplights, with planting bed. And then we felt that we needed to have more shade out there, especially in the afternoon, it really bakes. And so incorporating shade shelters and tree canopy is one way to do that. Um, and also incorporating, uh, native plantings, landscaping folders and, um. Lighting that I'll show you some examples of. So some views, this is a view looking from, um, kind of an aerial view, so you'll see there in the center. Uh, we've got the wall, so we're proposing, um, to recreate the wall out of similar segmental block type of a product. Um, and then to really fill it up with, um, with more artfully placed plaques. The six circular shapes would be the military service seals. Um, and then that long white rectangular, um, section would be plaques in some, some form or some signage. The flagpoles you see there with landscaping at the base, the, um, fountain is replaced there in the center, and I'll show you an example of that in a slide. And then we've got shade shelters with seating beneath the shade shelters. And then, um, you can see the wings or the additional sidewalks that kind of branch out from it. So. Provides more places for people to sit, we've got benches in there, we've got additional walls. Um, and then we've got our native landscaping, um, and also our lawn. Next one. So this is the view looking east, a little bit closer, so this is the, the existing crosswalk, um, right there at, um, the. Entrance to the plaza, so you can see the shade shelters and the wall in the background with planter pots on top. We thought the planter pots would be a place for annuals plantings. All the other plantings would be native plantings that, um, you know, are throughout. Distant to the, to the area would not require a lot of maintenance. The lawn, of course, would need to be mown periodically. And then our existing evergreens and, um, flagpoles are there in the background. This is a view looking to the south, so here's one of those, um, entry walks with the wings that has, um, our, our wall and our additional interpretive features. And then our central plaza off to the right. And then the next one shows an evening time view. So the types of lighting that we are, um, that we're looking at, we know that we have existing pole mounted lights, so you see that on the left, that would stay. Um, and we would add to it, uh, bollard lights, so those are the low bollards that are in the foreground. Lights that are mounted right underneath the cap of the wall, so. So those would kind of cascade down and, um, shine on the memorial features. Um, and then also uplights at the trees and the flagpoles in the background. Okay, so moving on to the artillery plaza, um, this is again the area that is, um, over at. Tate Street and you see on the left-hand side is where we've got our drinking fountain and our RPZ. On the right-hand side is that masonry wall and there's a large, uh, donor memorial plaque on a, on a boulder. And a fairly small paved area, this is the area that we thought was opportune for a future piece of artillery. Um, and again, just like at the other plaza, we generally have, um, great canopy trees, we've got. A honey locust and maples, and we've got some crab apples, and for both, we're proposing to, uh. Protect as many trees as we can, I think there's just one crab apple tree that we propose to remove in this one. So on the next. View, um, you can see, so we, basically we're the, we're, that tank is the, um, is the driver of the space here, but. Um, right in the center of the screen on the right-hand side is, um, that rectangular piece, that's the size that tank would be. And so if a tank were to go into this space, um, we think it could fit into that space and still allow people to, um, safely use the sidewalk. The wall would be replaced with, um, a new. Wall that gets straightened out and makes for space for the tank, we've got opportunities for picnic tables and benches. Um, landscaping, bike racks. The relocated memorial boulder stone, and then the existing drinking fountain and RPZ would stay in the same place where it is today. Um, we also have some large stone planter walls in the background, those. Touch, those would stay as is. And then lastly, uh, this is, you know, kind of tier three, I think, of the projects, but. Um, when this project started, we all were talking about expanding, and so, you know, this was, um, part of the discussion was, you know, expanding the experience along Willow Way. Um, and so these are just some snapshots to show how the existing sidewalks could be enhanced. So at the top left, at the intersection where Oak Street is, um, the sidewalk would stay as it is, but could be enhanced. With plantings and landscape folders. Um, there's a utility pole there that would not be touched. On the top right, where John Street is, um, at Willow Way, it was an opportunity to kind of create more of a widened sidewalk area, like a gateway plaza. Um, places for, um, benches and landscaping, um, some memorial. And then the image on the bottom, um, were, um, was a thought to. Allow the sidewalk to continue as it is along Willow Way. But there would be opportunities for these little knuckles or bump outs that, um, somebody could kind of hop off of the sidewalk and hop back on. Um, have a, a place to rest, um, some memorial opportunities with things like a low garden wall, signage, that sort of thing. The materials and products that we looked at, um, these are some examples, nothing has been fully decided yet, but just to share the things we've been thinking about. Um, benches and picnic tables are at the top, um, some bike rack options in the middle, rock out crappings. And planter pots, um, litter and recycling receptacles are at the bottom. I think any, the next step would be to really fully vet all of. Things with Public Works, make sure that maintenance, um, works with all of these things. Um, and then a little bit about lighting, so at the top, um, these show examples of bollard lights, um, that middle section shows. Wall light, also at the top right is a wall light. Um, flagpole uplight is shown, and then those three images on the right-hand side show the type of segmental wall that we were looking at. Um, it comes in different colors and shapes and sizes, and, and those are things that would be vetted. There on the left is the example of the granite globe fountain. Um, the idea was to keep the general area in the center where the fountain is today and just replace it with a new fixture. So replace that pedestal with, um, a granite globe that could kind of, you know, help educate about. Geography and also a place for water to come up off, out of the top and kind of cascade down. Um, some examples of shade structures are here, um, they could have different designs in them to help, you know, kind of create depth shade, again, you know, to make it more comfortable. Um, in the middle of the plaza. Um, and then we did spend a lot of time talking about, uh, the memorial features, and there's a lot of different types of. Memorial features that, um, we considered, so, um. There are memorial features that exist today that. So the five military service seals, those round plaques, those would be reused. Um, that overall memorial plaque with the, kind of the Ba relief in it, that would. Um, the seven individual names on small plaques, we propose that those get recreated as. Bigger plaques to honor those seven individuals. So those are existing ones, and then as far as new plaque. Um, we know that we have donor bricks out there today when the, um, the plaza was first built. Um, they're not all in great condition, a lot of them are cracked. We've worked with other communities in the past, um, where we have palletized all of those things, documented all of the names. And then provided the bricks back to the families if they want them. And then in documenting all the names, we've created a large bronze sign plaque, like you see here on the right side. That basically memorializes everything that was in those plaques. So it's just a way to, um, honor those folks because it was a important contribution. Um, and so it could have the names and the sayings and everything, um, on there. Um, and then some other examples of other types of memorial, um, functions and features are, are shown here. Uh, our landscape plantings, um, landscape plantings are generally native, uh. Also, we wanted to be somewhat patriotic and pick things that were in the red, white and blue world, although blue and landscaping is really more purple, but. Um, we wanted to try and, you know, kind of use a patriotic theme as much as possible. Um, okay, so, um, as I mentioned, we did a budget analysis for each of these areas, the Veterans Memorial Plaza was. Um, the priority project, um, this is our budget analysis, it assumes. Uh, a general contractor from a project delivery, meaning that the. Village would hire one general contractor to oversee everything. Um, and so it's broken down here in the way of, um, the layers of construction. Uh, so after demo and installing all the hardscaping, fountain and furnishings, the landscape plantings. Um, there's a subtotal there of five twenty-four, then we add on a fifteen percent contingency as well as. Eight percent and five percent for engineering. Um, and so that gets us to the total of six seventy-one. Um, that said, this is really just the first blush to kind of help us think about what this concept means. We've worked with communities in the past who have created sub-phases. Or worked with their own staff to do some things like purchasing equipment and materials, installing landscaping. Doing portions of the demo, there's lots of different ways to, um, you know, affect a budget, if there is a budget that we. To work with, we can also phase this in over time, doing our structural things first, followed by the non-structural kind of aesthetic things. So. Um, we're not proposing that we adopt a dollar amount tonight, it's really just to let you know kind of generally what this could be. You want to go to the other one? So we also did a budget analysis for the artillery plaza, same, um, same rules apply, uh, it's a smaller area and it has less equipment and less. Uh, stuff associated, so that total is two twenty-seven. And then the last one, if we take the. Vets Plaza and the artillery plaza out of it and just focus on those sidewalk areas, which is a pretty long length. Keeping the sidewalk generally intact, but then adding on those other plazas and bump outs and things, um, we're at two ninety. So with that, I think I've gone beyond my five minutes. But happy to answer questions.
You told me it was. Um, just a couple of things to note. Going back to the bricks. One of the most important things that we want to get out of this is that those bricks are sacred, you know, that they were paid for by people, so we actually do have a listing. Uh, we, we believe we have a very accurate listing of all those who ordered bricks. So if we move forward with anything, the intent was to call them and offer their brick back to their families so that they can keep the brick, but then as Jody said. Somewhere in that memorial, there will be. An inscription or something for each brick that was there would be somehow reincorporated back into the new memorial, so they wouldn't lose that as well. Um, the other thing too is, you know, we talked about things that came up that were interesting in the committee discussions. And at one point, the group was asked. What do you feel about interaction with kids at these, you know, these types of venues? And what was interesting is. The veterans came back and all said, we would like it. For more kids to come to these things and interact with the displays, and so. With, from a perspective, like you look at the, the globe fountain where that water comes over, like my kids will like go up to that, they'll play with that thing for hours. But things like that, it, it's really about how we get people down to the memorial, so no matter what the board decides, whether it's the current memorial or a new memorial. We need to do, the staff needs to do a better job of trying to get people to the memorial, so that's what we'll try to do, is we'll try to promote it more. Uh, Nada's been posting more, did put the bricks back on, you know, Facebook, and now here we have a concept, so we'll probably have to knock through the bricks, but. We're going to definitely try to get people down there, and our intent is to reach out to these other taxing bodies and maybe do more events with them down there. I mean, Goodwin Elementary is only a few blocks away, I mean, we can always bring down for educational programs and stuff like that. The thing too is, when you have a concept plan, the cost, Jody hit it on the head, this is not necessarily what the cost of those projects is. We've, we've done Riverfront, uh, Riverfront Park plans. The next phase is if the board wants to do something, and you look at this and say, I like the general concept. The next phase is really to hire Tuscan to come back and actually do the construction drawings. That's when that committee would start looking at material. That's when that committee would start looking at materials. As she said, we could parcel things off. Now, Brian even mentioned earlier that he could possibly have his guys plant all the plantings and things like that. So there's ways that you can look to reduce the cost, types of materials you use, all that stuff. We can value engineer it. There's a lot of contingencies also in this budget too. So that's something to think about. Grants become, they're not always available, but when you have a concept that you're moving forward with, it's easier to apply for grants because you can at least show the people you're applying for and then product of what it may look like. As opposed to, hey, we want to build something. What is, I don't know. Like now this, you actually have a concept that you can show them. So we could apply for grants if we see that there's any out there. The other thing too is going back to the budget. I don't have anything particular for construction budget this year. Off the top of my head, I believe we have $50,000 in the capital budget this year for this project. You know, Jody had her upfront cost as the first phase. We have money to hire Jody back for the second phase. If you, if the board wants to continue looking into this, to actually do the construction drawings and get that phase one tightened up a little bit, that would be the next step. And then the idea would be is theory, if you did that now, it would line up with our budget cycle. So we'd be able to come back February, March, putting the budget together for the board to review. You would be able to see what, what the estimated actual cost of the project would be. We can talk about how we want to fund it in the capital program if you want to go forward. But those are just a bunch of things to think about. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to. But we're kind of looking for direction, whether or not the board wants to at least go to the next phase to hone in on that first phase design.
Well, I like, I like the concept. I think originally that when John, it was John Hanson got the, we voted on back 20 years ago. We did receive some grant money for the original project. I think we all here support our veterans. And I have two good friends are veterans. My father was a veteran. My father-in-law is a veteran. My two brothers are veterans. I mean, we all would support them. I don't think there's anybody on this board would support veterans. I like the concept, so we move forward. That's where I'm at.
Yeah, I like it. I'd love to see us on at least the next step to see what else, you know, we can come up with.
I don't think we're really there yet with that cost. So we can do it maybe in phases.
I'd like to see us partner more with maybe like local VFWs or veterans groups or charities. Or, I mean, we've got a spot that maybe we should be reaching out to groups if you want to use it for a fundraiser or have a concert or do something. And I love the concept of inviting kids to come out because I think, you know, you've got to start young. You have to let them understand what this country was founded on. It's founded on the blood of our veterans. So if there's something maybe we could do with either the park district or the schools or some, some sort of an outreach, maybe, you know, let, let our history and social studies teachers know that, hey, you know, do this for field trip and what, what can we do? Have the mayor come out, the trustees, have some veterans. I've got a good friend of mine who runs the VFW out in Neberville. And she always talks about these old guys who just love to sit around and tell stories. Maybe see if we've got some local veterans who would love to come out and talk to some of those school kids and tell stories about what it was like in Afghanistan or Vietnam or wherever.
I think we talked about the committee level that that's going to be the value in it of just not once a year and be done with it. So how we go about that through the library, through the schools, that'd be a, in many ways. But first we have to get, get the ball rolling with at least improving it. Because originally we were just going to maybe make it a little larger. And when all went out there, it's like, it's in a bad shape. So that's what we thought, well, start kind of from scratch. So, but yeah, I think the pricing could be probably tighter and, you know, things phased in. But yeah, a million dollars seems pretty good and pretty good jump. But it's well worth it for vets.
Carolyn? I think we should move forward to the next phase. And I agree hand in hand that we try to, you know, bring more attention to it, bring more people to it. And I think that that's, I would just call hand in hand, but yeah, enhancing it would be a great idea.
All right. Anything, Steve, any questions?
Well, that's it. So at this point, what I'll do is I'll meet with Jody and we'll get a scope for phase two to, so confusing phase two for phase one. So phase two with Jody, which is really looking at phase one of the construction and then trying to tighten that up. So I want to point out, that's where we're going to look at things like what will actually be on the walls, what, where the inscriptions will go. And that's what we'll bring back to the board for feedback.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's our final item on the discussion. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Favorite say.
Aye.
Aye.
Both the same. And have good evening.